Thank you. Called to order the meeting of the Toledo Planning Commission for July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can we please rise, remove your hats and? Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have all five of our planning commission members here today, so we do have a quorum. And I will call at this time, does anybody have any other business items they wanna put on the agenda? I for one am going to add one myself, is going to be the election of a new co-chair for the planning commission. With the resignation of Brian Dennis, we are out that. And move on to the approval of a consent agenda. You gotta get a motion to approve?
Still.
Get a second?
Second.
Been moved in second and any discussions? Any questions on the minutes from last week, about last month? Any questions on the licenses?
That looked pretty standard to me. I don't have any questions about it. The asbestos one at first, but then I realized it was abatement, so it's good.
Okay, no discussion, I'm losing her vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carrying.
Can we do a sound check for Carrie?
You get a sound check?
Carrie?
Carrie? Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed. Any commissioners have any reports they want to add to the meeting? No, then let's move on, we have no public hearing tonight and we have no new business. Unfinished business. First on the agenda is the fire station impact fees. Chris, thanks for joining us. The Lewis County Fire District number two is proposing along with a resolution to collect impact fees. I went over them and I've spoken to Chris about it, as far as I'm concerned, they're extremely high. Uh, four dollars and forty-one cents per square foot for residential. And as much as eighteen dollars and forty-one cents per square foot for government buildings. Uh, these rates are significantly higher than the peer jurisdictions across Washington State. Uh, the fee calculation divides over six point one million dollars in district-wide capital costs. Including a new fire station and engines. By only the projected square footage of growth inside the city of Toledo. No impact fees are planned or secured for development in the unincorporated county area. Even though the infrastructure will serve the entire district. Um, I believe that violates the long proportionality in Nexus RWCW eighty-two point oh, two point oh five oh. Which requires that impact fees be proportionate to the development's impact. And benefit the pay, fee payer directly. By excluding county growth from the calculation, the plan unlawfully ships the financial burden one hundred percent to the city lots and residents. Although in the resolution, it does indicate the chief has the ability and the authority to negotiate interlo- interlocal agreements. Um, at this time, there is no interlocal agreement with the county. And uh, because of that, I mean, despite clear service coverage of the full district, the proposed resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five only initiates fee collection within city limits. The absence of county side agreements further exacerbates inequality and legal vulnerability. Um, the district is proposing fire impact fees that are higher than any nearby jurisdiction. Uh, over four forty per square foot for homes and nearly eighteen dollars, over eighteen dollars for government buildings, yet the fee study divides the entire cost by only city projected growth, I think I've mentioned that. In looking at some of the comparisons. Was looking at. I think there was one uh, for Kent, Washington. Their impact fees were twenty-four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents per unit for a single-family dwelling. I know that we had previously spoken with the developers of the Joma property and although they don't own that property anymore. Um, I, I believe the development that's going to occur there would be similar, they had indicated they would have executive homes along the ridge. Uh, in wildlife area and those executive homes would be in the neighborhood of thirty-five hundred to four thousand square feet. That's sixteen thousand or seventeen thousand dollar hit for somebody trying to build a, build a home. In addition to building permit fees, impact fees for parks. And um, if, if, if the study uh, shows that it's necessary, impact fees for traffic. Which is kind of a big pill to swallow when you're trying to encourage development within your city and not crush development within your city. So, does anybody else have any comments that they wanna make on that?
I just, I wasn't aware that, that this one was so much higher than similar jurisdictions. I didn't.
So what was about the five thousand five dollars per unit for a mid-family? Is that like apartment complex?
Right, like a multi-unit.
So each unit's gonna pay five thousand.
That's what that's asking for. I don't have any problem passing it along to the city council. For their review, but I can only suspect that they're not gonna have probably the same uh, opinions that, that we do. Um, I, I think there was a math error in there somewhere with regards to the division on the denominator which rose that uh, government fee to eighteen thirty-one. And I can tell you the city council is not going to approve. Let's say the city council decided they were gonna build a ten thousand square foot uh, new city hall, the house, city hall and fire. And the rest, they're not gonna pay a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in impact fees. I don't know how, I don't know, I, I know your capitalization costs and I know how you're trying to spread them and I know that we're missing that big link, which is the county.
Right.
And, and I don't know that you're gonna get resolution until you convince the county to participate or until you lower the number here so that it's representative of the remainder of the district. Including ours. I mean, if, if somebody could do the math and project the county. And the county should have that because their own population growths are going through the same uh, growth management plan that we are.
Right, and the county is, the county's growth management plan and their projections aren't incorporated.
Okay.
Now, the problem is we're not allowed to impose the fees on the county because the county does not enjoy to do so.
Right, I, I understand that and, and I don't know how the county's gonna deal with that um. But I can't let the citizens of Toledo be on the hook for one hundred percent of the cost when they're only getting a percentage of the benefit.
Yeah, they wouldn't be the only ones contributing, uh, of course.
Yeah. Is it on here?
If we divide by twelve hundred homes instead of small family unit.
Okay.
What docs are we reading from in that case? Do we have those?
You have their.
You have theirs.
What about those?
I had.
Be nice to help everybody on the same page as it were.
We get copied for that.
And it's only applies to new construction, right?
Yes.
And those, those fees were calculated based on your projected growth in your entire district, not just within city limits, so the funding of all the infrastructure assumes that
All.
All development would pay fees.
Right, so the fact that we would only be able to collect within those collected within city limits, we would only receive so much of the funding necessary to build the infrastructure.
So you're only able to collect within the city limits, but the fee itself is based on a division amongst all the growth within your entire district, so it's the city's not paying a disproportionate share, they're just paying only, the only share that's paying.
That is correct.
Because the county to this point hasn't adopted impact fees, although I've been hearing that they're considering that, so.
Right, which is what, we're, we'd, we'd be, we would be one of the first districts prepared to um, present that to the county once they're ready, so we're trying to enforce them.
But if the county adopted, it wouldn't really affect the, the impact fees as listed here, right? It wouldn't, they wouldn't be reduced or anything.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, yeah, so you know, and the county, you know, impact fees. It is at your discretion, right, at the, at the city or county's discretion as to whether or not they wish to impose those fees or to reassess an appropriate value. And that just needs to be applied uh, evenly across the world, right, to be fair, right?
Right.
Be able to lower fees for one specific area and not another, it would have to be evenly distributed.
And I think that's something that's best done at city council versus planning commission.
I'm sure they're gonna look, yeah, to your input and guidance and maybe even the recommendation, but absolutely.
So, city and county could collect them differently, it's all, it all depends on the interlocal.
Right.
Um, so you, I mean, the county may agree to collect fifty percent of the impact fees, you've identified it, while the city could agree to only collect twenty-five percent.
Right.
And the fees don't have to be equally collected through the jurisdiction, but they have to be equally allocated by the district.
Right.
So the allocation that you've done is what's required um, so that, so that you do um, so that you do meet the rough proportionality argument, I guess, or the, the rough proportionality requirement. So did, but to divide them up any other way on the district side wouldn't hold water, but
Correct.
um, but the jurisdictions as they adopt them can adopt proportionate share uh, based on their jurisdictional authorities under the, the Growth Management Act.
Yeah, for the reasons as you explained, right, I mean, your, your projected growth, what you're trying to draw on is business, things of that nature. There's a lot of factors that play into your suit.
And you know, and one point I wanted to make too, and I, I had had this discussion with the school district at one time. As, as we move out towards Highway sixty-three, our, our land areas get a lot bigger. And by the time we do get there, we are going to be probably in a position where we're gonna have much larger developer coming along and saying, I'd like to develop, you know, forty or fifty acres into a community. And, and those do require that they're done under a condition of approval. And the city can make certain requests of those developers. Uh, albeit in, in exchange for not paying the impact fees, you provide us with a new fire station or you provide us with a new school. I've built many of them uh, in California along be- because of those same lines when you get large. And, and it's not unheard of in any of the jurisdictions in Washington to have that same requirement made. So, I mean, it, it's not gonna purely depend on what we decide here.
No.
Uh, and uh,
Can I project a little logistics statement?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to, so from a logistics standpoint. If you guys decide to move this to council for a decision as is, it's gonna be late enough in the year in trying to get the comp plan done that you may not be able to react, or the fire department may not be able to react to council. So, I just wanna throw that out there, that you're, you're pushing through an entire comp plan including this to council fairly late.
But it was gonna have the final say on it, it's going to be council.
Yes, but I'm saying if you could just as, if you take it as is and just say, okay, if it was moved to council while I'm saying it there, that doesn't give the fire department, the fire district time to react.
Well, any proposed changes by council, in other words, if the changes comes from here, they can submit a more uh, amenable package to council.
So, so the package that you're forwarding is a recommendation on the comprehensive plan. So really, the only piece that we're doing is either recommending that council adopt the district's um, capital facilities plan and, and comprehensive plan by reference or not.
Right.
And the actual imposition of impact fees is gonna happen under a separate ordinance and that will not come to planning commission. That is, that is only a council act unless council direct staff to take it to planning commission and air it here first, but that'll be a future action and does not have to happen by the end of the year.
So I don't have an issue with, with approving the resolution with regards to the studies that have been done. And the anticipation that there will be impact fees, that's what you're alluding to. Because I think that we could approve that here, recommend it to councils for approval. And if it's going to be a separate resolution or a separate ordinance with regard to the actual amount of the impact fees, then we can let council deal with that at that time.
So, and, and in my staff report to council, you know, when we bring the package to them, I can, I can include in there the fact that, that it was brought up and discussed that these seem like they're more than what neighboring jurisdictions are and they're maybe disproportionate because the county's not collecting them, I can include all of that in there. And we can still recommend that, that we include the, the district's comp plan, just because we include the district's plans and you're including their entire plan, not just the resolution.
Right.
So the resolution is, is provided as evidence that the district has passed these impact fees. Um, they've adopted them, but they can't collect them. Um, but that's, that, that's another element that is going along with the comprehensive plan, so we can consider it all together. But the, the planning work that the district has done um, and, and the associated fees that they've adopted. Those get forwarded as part of the package, but really the only thing is um, should we or should we not include the districts? If we don't include the district's plan as part of our comp plan, if you recommend to council they don't do that, then we would lose the ability to collect impact fees.
No, that was my intent was to have them not approve the plan. Because I think the plan is sound.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was choking on the amounts in the, in the fee, impact fees. And because I could see the council choking on the same thing.
But isn't that, is another question, and so apologize for interrupting, but that, is there any value in us recommending that these fees be revised or that we have some alternatives before we push it to council?
Well, I, I think we're putting the chief on notice with regards to the fact that we're not buying off on that.
Well, I, I have some questions about, about it uh, that I'd like to clear up with the chief, if that's okay.
Certainly.
And it's mostly from my ignorance on, on the subject, I just wanna sort of make sure I guess everybody understands how this is structured, so there's some capital costs, some spending that you need to do to upgrade the trucks and all that other thing, the facilities to be able to service, so the, the expected demand in the growth plan.
Because of growth.
Right. And so, this fee right now, I'm looking at six point one million, is that a, a single time fee or is it projected to recur on a periodic basis?
That is um, projected over time.
Mm-hmm.
In order for us to it's because impact fees only, only basically will cover about thirty percent of the overall project cost.
Oh, I understand.
Other sources, other funds are required. So that time element is based on whatever we're able to collect everything, impact fees can only be applied to a certain percentage of it. So as those fees are collected, they're applied, you know, appropriately to any one of those capital investments, whether we're starting to build a new station. We've got fees collected, we could start using some of those funds to pay for permitting.
Thirty percent of the overall budget's being covered by the fees.
Exactly, um, and the vehicles, you know, vehicle purchases, same thing, right, because vehicle purchases are over time, we're making payments, we can then start allocating some of these fees up to thirty percent or whatever the value is type of thing, yeah, so this is over time. The fee schedule also adjusts over the years, right, it's something that we reassess our plan, we reassess our needs, we may have had other funding sources come in. Say for example, a station gets donated or completely funded, that gets pulled from you know, our overall needs, everything gets readjusted, new fee schedules are then reassessed.
Okay, and so, this six point one million that we're talking about, it, uh, when I look at it from a layman's perspective, I'm seeing, oh, there's a balance here that needs to be paid. Is there a timeline that we're distributing these impact fees over to match that sum? Or can the impact fees be lowered by half, say, and paid o- over further amount of time, or how, how, what is, how does that calculation actually play out?
Is it a twenty-year period, like, is that what the twenty forty-four base number represents?
So, so I can maybe help to answer that one, um, so when we do comprehensive planning, the state of Washington says that compliance have to address twenty years of growth. So all of the growth numbers and all of the costs associated with growth and everything else um, you know, so that, so I guess the district could do a forty-year plan and say, we're gonna do this in the first twenty years and this in the second twenty years. But for the purpose of all the population, they're considering everything else, it aligns with a twenty-year plan that's required for all the other jurisdictions, right? So we're required to plan for twenty years, which is what we're doing, we have that's, and that's where all the population growth and, and housing projections and everything else is based on.
Okay, so that, sorry to interrupt, but if that, what that means to me is that in, we've said that over these twenty years, it's gonna be six point one million.
Right.
Right?
Well, it, the six point one, I believe, is, is the impact fee share of all the projects, so as, as the chief mentioned, you can't pay for a hundred percent of your infrastructure with impact fees.
Right.
Um, and there are specific rules tied to um, the timing for spending impact fees, you just can't collect impact fees and hold them forever.
Right.
If um, that, that's also a violation of, of some section of the impact.
Well, the idea is we're, we're in, we're occurring uh, costs as we operate and these impact fees are kind of matching that so that we're paying as we go, that sort of thing.
The impact fees go into more of a savings account, so that they can be spent in chunks. And that is supposed to help to mitigate for the impacts of growth as it occurs.
Okay.
Impact fees, um, because the growth, I mean, usually when you get um, a new home, for example, you'll pay you know, a park's impact fees and all the other uh, and, and school impact fees and, and fire impact fees and some, some jurisdictions' traffic impact fees. Um, so you pay all those impact fees, but the impacts occur very quickly after that. So you're basically funding a project that's gonna offset growth that's occurring before the project occurs, so you're always a little bit behind the curve.
Okay.
You're not collecting, I, I mean, ideally you would be able to collect ahead.
Yeah.
But that's not the way, that's not the way the program is set up, the, the program is set up so, and you can only impose impact fees on new development.
Yeah.
And you can only assess them on the percentage of that, that's based, you can't, you can't plug out a hole that you've made previously.
I understand.
With a new impact fee on development, that also is.
So my question then is, so this, am I to look at the six point one million as that thirty percent?
That's uh.
Okay, over twenty years, is that right?
That's a better question.
Basically, all total project costs is probably thirty-eight million.
Right.
In total.
But the impact fees are addressing the six point one million over twenty years.
Correct.
And based on the projected growth, we're of, let's say, houses and all these type of structures. We've determined that these individual square footage numbers match up with that growth to pay that off over the, over that time.
Based off of little or a substantial amount of growth that, yeah, because that's the, the risk you run into when you're doing comparisons to some, somewhere like Kent. They may not, they may have substantial um, growth in their community already projected and planned. And it's thousands of homes, not hundreds of homes in there, or that fee is distributed among thousands. You know, much lower fee, they may have the same costs.
Right.
It's gonna cost them the same thirty million to build a station, for example. It's just, that is now spread against, you know, spread across multiple um, homes applying for permits, so that's why impact fees and in your plan, you don't reference the actual fee on the table, that's constantly evaluated.
Yeah.
Right, our growth projections could change, we could find out three years from now. Thousands of homes are applying for permits, not hundreds, we reevaluate, we, we reassess the calculations, we also reassess our needs as well.
So the direct consequence of having our calculation, sorry, just last thing, the direct, the direct consequence of having our projected plan, let's call it uh, B of the certain number, the, the certain rate of growth that it has in it, directly ends up resulting in these high fees per individual unit.
Right.
Okay. Right, I got.
I guess my biggest question has always been, how did you arrive at such disparate square footage assessments? Why are you at eighteen dollars for government buildings and four, two dollars for an outfielding and?
So there's.
Is there a formula that I'm unaware of, but?
Yeah, and I could share some of the um, the form, but we don't, we didn't get the actual, you know, um, the true formula calculations as part of the service they provide, but they did provide some table formats that I could share with the council that shows it's based off of call volumes, how many calls come from certain areas that they allocate uh, that number to. Also, the growth projections coming from, you know, your, your planning committees and stuff as far as what we're going to be building in that area. Is it, you know, heavier on commercial and, and government, or if you have your own schools or residential, whatever it is, those calculations and percentages adjust based off of the information our consultants were providing by both the county and by the city. So.
And are our, are our impact fees set in our fee schedule, so it's regardless of what they have in their plan?
Plan, right.
It would still come to council and it would go on to our fee schedule, which we could also change.
That's, that's true, although if you change it i- if you change it to, to say, we agree to collect half of what the district's asking us for categorically, then the science that the district has done still stands behind the calculation.
Correct.
But without the city recalculating everything on their own and coming up with that and their findings and documenting that, you can't just say, eh, we think that residences should be a thousand bucks and government should be zero.
It allows us flexibility because things change so much, so five years from now, rather than have them go back and change the plan, five, they can keep it the way it is, we can workshop it as council.
But it has to be based on, it has to be based on a, a real calculation and it has to be based on the standards that are set out for impact fees. So you, so you know, like if council wanted to say, for example, like that they thought development should pay for a hundred percent of the district's cost for growth, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't lead the legal test for impact fees.
Okay.
So, but, but you're right, you can change that and you can set that, the amount that you collect is set by council. And I you know, within there, you do have the ability to modify the fees. But for you to modify the fees in a way that doesn't any way to modify the fees other than categorically.
Not just because we like this number.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, you'd have to do some analysis to either show, or the, or the district would, would have to show this is a more appropriate number based on these factors.
Right, so coming up with the number isn't gonna be, it's important, but it's not like a huge rush for us to finish before we finish our comp plan and before we enact there, it's right.
Not, the only thing that's important for the comp plan is that we get it in there and that we get some estimates from the district about what their capital facilities costs have done, and what the district has provided checks the box.
Right.
So we can include this and then we could spend the next five years working out what the impact fee should be.
Right.
Um, it's up to council, I mean, council hasn't directed us to adopt any impact fees yet, so
Right.
So, so we don't even know for sure if council will adopt impact fees, we've just heard that they would be willing to consider it, but in the, in the case of the school district, they, they didn't because the numbers the school district came up with were disproportionate to what council perceived the real need to be, and, and council has that authority. Um, I can certainly include this in the recommendation as we forwarded to council. But I would also point out that tonight, we're still workshopping, so if the planning commission feels like you want more information on this before you can make a recommendation, then um, you should let the district know that tonight and they can bring that back, we're, we're gonna have um, at least one more workshop on this, I, I'd like to bring the entire package back to you all with all the maps that we've talked about and all of the revised comp plan elements and all the revised codes and everything else that we've been through. So that you can have it all as a complete package and we'll do one final workshop on that. Hopefully next month and then I'll set a, a public hearing where you'll formally, I mean, you've accepted public comment all along, but so that'll be in September where you have a actual public hearing and accept public testimony on this. So until you have a public hearing and actually conclude that hearing and make a decision and a recommendation to council, um, you can continue to ask the district for more information if you want to, I mean, that's, that's always allowed.
So, will you see the calculations on how to, how to write the numbers, and then you, I had another question regarding um, we, we were talking that only the, the city is pay, it's actually, it's actually paying the impact fees, the city residents, not the people in the outlying area.
Yeah, so if, if this would only imply that permits pulled within city.
Right.
So, the fact that the county has yet to agree your votes to start collecting. agree your votes to start collecting impact fees, we would not receive.
So the projected fe- fees, sorry to interrupt, the projected fees that we're saying here that we need these fees to pay for this particular thing is because is this taking into account that those folks aren't paying? That's assuming they are.
And that was my question. My question does is the impact fees that you're that are on your sheet here. Are that they're separate? And if if the county was putting in their money. They would be the same as they are now. And and I guess my only issue with it so far is and and it's double edged sword because I've been on the development side and I've seen our developers walk away with bags of cash. In in a in a booming economy, these are absorbed very easily because the price of home goes up a hundred thousand dollars in two months. Uh, but twenty four hundred square foot house is still gonna cost you ten thousand dollars in impact fees for the fire. And you're gonna have a ten thousand dollar building permit and you're gonna have uh, ten thousand or fourteen thousand dollars in 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 hookup. So you're you know, you're at forty thousand dollars before you've actually walked onto your lot to build anything. And that's not it's actually not bad. I mean, in California, we're used to spending close to eighty to a hundred thousand dollars on a lot before just in fees before we actually put a stick in the air. And it was really, you know, and we still haven't managed to build five hundred thousand dollar homes. So I don't know. Um, I'm going to ask for a motion to move this to council for approval on the plan itself. Uh, with the uh, understanding that the fee structure itself will be discussed at a later date.
By council.
By council.
Yep, it it unless council specifically directs the fee structure to come back to planning commission, that normally wouldn't be. Part of what, it's not a normal duty, but you you all do a lot that other planning commissions don't do at council's direction, so. Um, I know council uses you all as a sounding board and and this public forum as a way to collect early public input, so they.
That's pretty sharp guys.
So so they may, um, but they, I'm just saying that typically, impact fees and and the and the fee ordinances and other things wouldn't come to planning commission first and they're not a usual planning commission duty, but you're you're a bit of an anomaly as far as that goes. You approve business licenses. Most planning commissions don't do that. When council did the fee schedule last go around, they did ask for your input on that, so um, so maybe this will come back, but just, I wouldn't count on it because there's nothing that says that council has to have your input on on impact fees.
That's a question.
Kind of for you too, is the six point one million dollar projected amount of money that you're gonna need, that's based on growth of the city and the growth of the city is also dependent on the expansion of the city. The area that you're servicing would be more inclusive of actual city in town services rather than countywide services. So as growth occurs, you should occur more money from areas that's not currently city. So is that factored into it at all right now, or is it just based off of current UGA boundaries?
It's it's based off of the projected boundaries and growth projections that were received from both the county and cities.
What are the projected boundaries? Up five oh five.
But but your fees are based on your district boundaries, not city limits. So the so the district boundaries include not only the city and the UGA and and whatever future UGA. But all the surrounding areas that are in in the fire districts, so.
The surrounding areas are probably gonna get swallowed up by UGA or city district boundaries.
When they start paying, he's saying they already account, they're assuming they're all paying when they put these fees together. So they, when they, as they start paying, if I understand it correctly, that doesn't, that will not affect these numbers.
The city's about one seventh of their district. And and actually, that the number of the number of is based on roughly three hundred homes at eighteen fifty, not twelve hundred. So if you divide by twelve hundred homes, which I assume is the whole county, you're down to a dollar sixty six as far as, which is a lot closer to being in line with shoreline or can or other places. Not not a lot of people are collecting fire. So if you there are.
Well, most of the inner cities have fire departments rather than fire districts for their county, right?
Well, yeah, uh some, but not all. And and some district boundaries aren't coincident with city limits too. So in city of Chehalis, they have they have fire service by a fire department, but they also have district boundaries that serve a lot of their UGAs and other pieces that serve their urban infrastructure. So so they have both districts and a department and I I think there's there's a lot of different ways that it's done.
Todd, can you clarify your comments earlier about uh, that we have some sort of um, time to decide certain things before the final public hearing and we adopt the resolution? You were saying that earlier. Did that mean that whatever we do today with adopting this resolution, we can still somehow change that adoption or?
Yeah, you're not, this is a workshop. So we're talking about what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. Um, you know, when when Steve asked for a motion, it's basically just a consensus on direction at this point. You're not actually forwarding something off to council. We'll forward this all off to council as a complete. So we're workshopping it, we're discussing it. The decisions you make tonight are are just whether or not you need more information from the district or whether you're ready to move it on. And I think that's the motion that that Steve has on the table currently is he felt like he was ready to move it on, so he's made a motion to do that, um, with the caveat that he wanted council to look more closely at the at the amounts. Um, but if you want, um, if you're not comfortable with the motion that's on the table that Steve made, then we do have time. We have at least another, um, probably another month or two at planning commission before you actually have to formally make a recommendation to council on this.
So my 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 concern is only this idea of the calculation that we're using. And I know, I don't know how comfortable you are, everybody is understanding how these numbers are arrived at. Can they be arrived at in a way that doesn't uh, make us recalculate everything?
Without asking them to present their full report to us that shows all the calculations and their studies and having a whole lot of homework to do to to determine whether we agree with that or not. You know, I I believe their their consultants are are licensed, they're bonded, they're paid. Um, I would be willing to take their word for them when they did their calculations, that the report they put out was accurate. Uh, just like you, when they stamp the engineer's drawings, you take it for granted, the guy knows what he's doing. So since we're only saying essentially that we're ready for council to look at their report and asking them to review their impact fee structure. Unless we wanna get into that hole, we'll see in three weeks after we spend all of our time reading the report. And none of us is really qualified to make changes to the report. Um, I suggest we move on and and go ahead and let it go.
If that's the motion you made earlier.
Yes, sir.
Then I would second.
We have a a motion and a second further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Moving on.
Thank you, Chief.
Wetlands code update. I believe that we got these in our packet, show the various yeah, changes that were made.
Did both of you, were you both able to hear everything that was going on? Did you have audio problems, Francis and Carrie? You couldn't hear? Oh, good, okay.
So uh, maybe to to get us started here, we we have a couple of different things. The part that's in in your packet was, um, so for the wetlands piece, this is what ELS had prepared based on your input previously. And there's a couple of other edits. So normally, this would be the second touch. We're doing a two-touch. The first touch, you tell us what you want us to do. Then we bring it back with this is what we did. Um, in this case, that's what the wetlands, um, that's what the wetlands regulations are. Um, ELS also had noted, uh, because we're also working in a bunch of different jurisdictions and these are evolving. We're taking input from those jurisdictions and bringing them into this. So based on some of the input we got elsewhere, um, Carrie had also made some edits in here based on that. And then at the same time, uh, because we're still trying to finalize our shorelines and shorelines uh, has its own separate critical areas section. Ecology Shorelines invited other members of ecology to review our current draft of the wetland code and they provided us some feedback and input, some early feedback. They're gonna get the opportunity through CBA and the and the sixty day review. Uh, but they offered, um, so we took them up on it and said, yeah, sure. Uh, that was Rachel coordinated um, all that through her work that she's doing on the shorelines piece. And that's what you have printed out here on on the desk is is this is um, a clean version that I deleted all the comments out of that's in our draft and accepted all the changes. And we forwarded that off to, um, ecology and ecology provided us with with these additional comments. So as we're talking about wetlands, we have two documents to look at. We have the one that I prepared that shows you all the track changes that occurred since you saw this at your last meeting and has comments in there as to why they were changed. And then we have the paper document in front of you that has the the additional changes that, um, but basically their comments, they didn't make any direct changes. They made comments and those come from the Department of Ecology.
And this, that's actually been approved by planning and it went through council and that's where it stopped. So all the changes that they're making are just because of the time difference where things have changed, yeah.
Right, so so this this now influences our review of this wetlands because these are likely the comments we're gonna get when we submit this draft ecology. So it's kind of an early preview, so it was kind of nice. It worked out well. And it was, it was very kind of them to to do that, but so with that, we do have Carrie and Francis both on tonight. Um, and they are leading this effort. So I just wanted to preface that the same is gonna be true for the habitat. We have the same thing going on there, habitat. This is kind of your first touch on habitat and um, and then we've got uh, also comments from commerce based on the draft, so. So with that long introduction, uh, Carrie and Francis, you wanna take it from here, walk through the changes for wetlands?
Do you want me to start with the ones that uh, we made or you want to go through the ecology change?
That's a question for the chair.
Would it be more, would it be more, offer more continuity to go through ours first and then any corresponding changes that they've talked about that affect that and that way we can sort of try to keep it together in our heads?
And we haven't had a lot of time. We just got these back yesterday, so we haven't had a lot of time to go through ecology's comments in detail.
At least we're not in our pack.
No, the ecology comments are not in your packet. That was a supplement that just came back yesterday, so.
Well, I read this and I read the habitat one already and I was okay with the comments. So do you wanna direct us on what additional information you have from ecology that that affects what we we got already?
Uh, we can, we can do that. Um, I don't we don't necessarily know if it's going to affect what we have over it. Well, I I just had a few additions, so let's, if you wanna go to the ecology comments, um, we can talk about those. I did go through both the wetlands and the, um.
Just to clarify, there, um, you're okay with all the edits that you're okay with the draft and the edits that ELS made that's in your packet?
I required myself to sit down and go through this and 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 look at the comments.
One that maybe I thought should be addressed in this packet was specifically, you know, these common line buffers. So existing residences, if they're already there, you can build a house the same distance or halfway between if there's only one and the actual wetland buffer. I would like to see or get more information on a road cutting off a wetlands upper. Because I've ran across that where there's a wetland and then a road and your buffer goes way over here where there's an obvious hardscape that separates any critical areas from what could be developable land.
I I thought we yeah, I thought we'd address that with functionally isolated.
Yeah, that would be in the functionally isolated section, which is that is on page four. And it's, um, item number two under required wetland buffers.
Yeah, but that only gets you a fifty percent reduction in your wetland buffer, doesn't it?
I think what he's trying to say is that the buffer, let's say the buffer goes beyond the road. The road is seventy five feet from the one side of the buffer and the buffer is two hundred feet. And and that road is obviously a delineation line between the buffer on the left, let's say, and the additional fifty or seventy five feet on the right. Is that area still going to be considered buffer area?
No, that's what the functionally isolated language is basically saying. Um, the fifty percent that you're talking about, that's the, that's the vertical separation. That's the, uh, that's a little bit different than being isolated by a road.
So it's it's page four, it's, um, seventeen thirty eight, two seventy, sub item two, functionally isolated wetland buffers. So that's so that's the, that's the clause that addresses your question directly. Um, the the thing that we added in that is not in there typically is that because Toledo also is one that has many hillsides and steep ravines that go down into wetlands. Um, ELS was able to craft some some additional language here talking about that vertical separation. So if you have a thirty percent slope, then the buffer, um, then the buffer goes to the, um, to the bluff um, or the cliff, but not not past that. So the the language in here addresses both the horizontal features that you're talking about where you have a paved surface or a house. Um, ecology did have some.
That would be a high bank at the river.
Yeah, but then you're gonna have a steep slope buffer, yeah, so.
And ecology did have a comment on that.
One to one.
No, I think that they were yeah, so they're.
They wanted us to use their definition, which I don't really wanna do, so.
You might expand on that for.
I apologize, I am up in Bremerton taking care of a family member who's, um. So this is not my usual workstation, so it takes me a bit to get to something, that's why.
Well, and 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 we did just get these last night and I I think I kind of, as I was sending these off uh, to the city, I I said we may or may not be prepared to discuss all these tonight because we haven't been through them in detail, but.
So I I I can weigh in because I can see ecology's comment. So we we gave specific items like a road, human-made built structure, um, the bluff, steep slopes, um, retaining walls. And ecology said more like, well, how about just it's development general, but we're gonna give a lot of you know, it gives latitude to the administrator, which in this case would be Todd to make the call. That's kind of what they're suggesting. And they don't even mention steep slopes. So I think ours is still better and we can still add language at the end of it, says the administrator still gets to make the decision whether something is functionally isolated or not.
Did that answer your question? We kind of entered two at once there. We were dealing with ecology's comment and your question, but.
Yeah, no, I get it. I just, yeah, the way that's worked in there, I guess, it kind of all runs together, you know?
It's, yeah, it code language is unfortunately not always user friendly and if we try to make it more user friendly, then it becomes less legally defensible. So there's a balance line in there. We wanna try to keep our code so that it's written so that so that we're meeting the requirements and it's defensible if somebody challenges it, but. So that we're meeting the requirements and it's defensible if somebody challenges it, but. We also try to word it so that it's not so difficult to read, but this is a very complicated subject. And obviously one that ecology has an opinion on too.
So Todd, what do you want to do here? I mean, I think everybody has read these, at least. I know Tom has and, and Renee has and I have with regards to the corrections that were made and the input that was provided here. And we haven't had a chance to go through the ecology. Do we want to postpone this? Do we want to until, have a workshop?
So I, um, I, I'd suggest if you're okay with the second touch that you have had time to review on the ELS draft. That, uh, maybe you give us time to address these comments and we'll bring those back to you. For a third touch on that, at the same time, we bring back the second touch on, on the, on the next item.
On the habitat.
Yeah. So we'll, so we'll just do that next month.
That makes sense.
At that. Habitat had a lot of changes from the, 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 compared to the, to the, to the wetlands.
Yeah, well, so the, the habitat is the first time you've seen that. I mean, last time you saw it, you saw it generally, but you, we discussed a bunch of broad topics. So, so this, so this time those topics are now all implemented with some. In this graph, but in the habitat, it's kind of the first time you're really getting to review all that. So. I, so Chair, I'd say if you're okay with wetlands, the edits that ELS has made. Um, then if, if the committee, if the commission is ready to accept those, then we can move on for tonight. And we'll bring back something more on this next month with something to address ecology's comments.
Anybody have?
Yeah.
Okay. And Carrie, did you have anything more you wanted input on from the planning commission on the wetlands before we, we do move on? Is there anything in there that you had outstanding questions or anything that you and I can't work out?
Only if they do. I mean, I think, and I don't know if it showed up on the copies they got. But I had highlighted the areas that I had added. Um, to like the wetland section.
Like page ten or something?
Yeah, I think they're saying they're categorically okay with your edits.
Okay, yeah.
Any questions for them, then?
No, I don't. I just, those were the added. If they don't have any questions, then I don't need to explain anything and.
Okay, and I don't know if you've had a chance to go through ecology's comments or, or not, but. You haven't?
I have.
You have. Did you have any questions or need any direction from the planning commission? On any of ecology's comments? Is there anything in there that requires some? Some city input as to which way they want to go on addressing those? Is there anything that stepped out and said, oh, I don't know how to do this without getting planning commission input?
There was one, but you know, I think probably, um. Oh, here it is. Okay. Cause I remember I wrote, um, a little note that said, ask PC. Oh, yes. So there is a table. It's that land use intensity table. Um, and it's on page three of, of twelve.
This is still in the weapons.
Yes. So ecology had a comment, um, under moderate, um. Land use, we had residential, which was density between one unit per acre and one unit for four point nine nine. Um, they are recommending that we use, um, for moderate use. One unit acre or less. So that would be a significant change. Um, and then they were asking that we take residential completely out of low intensity. Use. So there would be no residential that would be considered low intensity. Um, apparently that's in their guidance. However, what I wrote was. I believe that I did see some other ordinances that had this language that have been approved.
Yeah, if, yeah, i- if you're in Clark County, I think if you're over five acres, you're low, low intensity.
Yeah. So I want to go back and check that. But I wanted your input on whether, I mean, I don't think you're going to want to change it. Um, to what their guidance is, especially if we can find other jurisdictions that have already gone through the process and it was accepted. Because that's a pretty significant change.
So do you all under, understand the importance of this table as it relates to buffer calculations? So that, okay.
Yeah.
So you want to run that down?
Well, the question she's asking you is, is this something that, that we want to, um, hold our ground on? Um, you know, there's. There's some of these that we can hold our ground on, but if we hold our ground on everything and dismiss all of their comments, it's not likely they're going to approve it when they get.
That's not what I meant at all, Todd. What I meant was she had indicated that she had several other jurisdictions she believed. Had that same language and it had been approved. And if we can collect a few of those and use them as a. Uh, substantiation for our decline to accept their comment. Then I think we've stand in a lot better position than if we blindly just said no.
Right.
Asking if she was willing to, to do that.
Yes.
And are, are ranges in line with those supporting examples?
From what I, and I think Francis is right, that, that low that was, um. The five acres, that, that is a Clark County, um. One, and they have, their ordinance has been approved. So. I'm not sure why they want us, I guess it's just in their guidance, but, um.
Well.
It, it could be as simple as that, yeah. Uh, this was an early review that they did as a courtesy, so. Um, they probably just relied heavily on their guidance and, and that. So I can, as Chair Hughes, or I'm sorry. Chair Birch, I can't remember which planning commission meeting I'm sitting in, as Chair, as Chair Birch had, had indicated, um. We just need to come up with some documentation that backs us up and we'll just provide that as part of the record and we'll try to leave it as it is.
And, uh, uh, you know, I would say half of the comments that they made were, you might consider. Which. I like that when they say that because that means if we don't want to consider that, we don't have to. And there were quite a few that they said that, that, like, um. That, that horrible, that horrible paragraph that talked about having to have an, uh. Vegetated buffer.
Yeah. The. It was on a, on a, yeah, seventeen, uh, thirty-eight, two seventy.
And, um, we took that out because that would be a significant hardship. To most people to have to, if the buffer wasn't vegetated, have to plant all that. It's not in our current ordinance, but it was. Um, something that they, uh, and other jurisdictions put in. Um, and she said, you might consider, and I'm like, well.
That, that, um, that's an overreach of law, in my opinion. If you're doing anything on that land that you've got substantially established and then somehow you want to, you have to go in for a permit. And they say, oh, well, you need to rip that building out because it's in the buffer. Or you need to reestablish, pull that concrete out and plant, plants in. I'm like, that's an overreach, blatant.
So, so with the notion that they have different language, like you might consider and so on, this particular item is per our guidance. We would.
Right, that's a little, that's a little stronger to me.
Okay.
When they say that per our guidance, it's a little stronger. In those cases, I think we're really going to have to have some kind of justification. Um, but. When they're just saying, you know, there's another one. She said, you might consider adding, like, the buffer tables. That we took from Clark County. She said, well, you may consider to use our tables. Well, we specifically didn't want to use their tables because this is clearer. So, you know, it's just things like that where we're going to say. And we, I can even reference Clark County because, you know, Brent from Clark County basically said we did that to make it. Easier to understand. And she even agrees that yes, it looks like all the widths are how they should be. Um, so I think a lot of these, I think it'll be easier to justify the ones that says, you know, may, you may consider that. The, the guy, the ones that says our guidance says that might be a little harder. Um, but I think Todd's right. You know, I think once we go through this, um. We kind of have to pick our battles. And if there's quite a few of those that we feel like they are going to be hard on, we might. Just decide, you know, maybe one of them still can go. I don't know, Todd, did you get a sense that? So these are the initial comments, but did you get any sense of that, whether there'd be a significant? Um, addition to those once it went through CBA or?
I, I mean, this was a courtesy that they did in very short order, actually. I, I mean, I just sent this to them last week and they just sent it back to us yesterday. So. It, it all happened very quickly. I, I think that they were just trying to be helpful and point out where guidance was different than what we had. I, I think that's the way I would take these comments. Um, I think it's likely that they're going to come back with similar comments and maybe firmer language when they go through CBA review. And when it goes through the, the final review. Um, and those will be comments that we have to address. This was just a courtesy review, I think. Just pointing out, this is what we've seen. This is our guidance and, um. Kind of putting us on notice that we're differing in, in some locations.
So in addition to the idea of justifying information as to why we would want to keep that. Is it worth, uh, addressing the premise behind why they are asking this, which is their assumption is it's going to be more protective of wetlands? To remove the residential and, and put that new sort of, uh. You know, uh, land use intensity, a categorization on it. So can we sort of justify why it wouldn't be that? Also in the explanation. Was that helpful?
Yeah, yes, we will do that. I mean, you gotta be kind of short and succinct, succinct about it, but yes. Um. I, I think we back up whatever we, wherever we depart significantly from their guidance, we need to have that backed up. Whereas just, just a suggestion, I'm not as concerned about us having to back up. The decision. And I think Todd's experience, our experience over the years is that. Ecology, if they have heartburn with one or two elements, they'll let you know. And then sometimes it's a negotiation to get to the end.
Well, and I don't know if this could be possible, Todd, but since we're going to go through these and kind of already put our justifications. There was any way that could be submitted at the, you know, so I'm assuming it will be the same ecology reviewers. But there could be additional ones.
Well, and I, I did in my response and thanking them for their early input, I said, we might reach out to talk more about some of these. So I, I left the door open for us to communicate directly with them. And we can do that over the next month while we're preparing the next draft for planning commission. Was there anything else that, that you needed to get any firm direction on for wetlands from planning commission at all?
That was the only one that kind of raised a flag to me because that would, that was going to change things. That was a pretty big one. Um. So I just want to, I was almost sure planning commission was going to say, no, we don't want to just go with that. But I, I just wanted to make sure before, um, we did a lot of work on that one.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much. And I assume that we'll be speaking again.
Well, fish and wildlife habitat is up next and they are. Now, now we've been, that was, that was the conclusion of wetlands. Um, fish and wildlife habitat, this one is. Um, really the first time you've looked at some of these, that there's more major edits in there than there are in the wetlands. Um. And the, again, there, the draft that I've sent you in your packet. Um, the, the one that Carly had sent out to all of you in your packet, the one I provided, um, that one has all of their edits in it. Uh, and then on top of that, we also have fishing wildlife comments on that document as well. So, um, Chair, I don't know.
Did we get a copy of the comments from fish and wildlife?
Yeah, that was printed on the table for you today. That's this document.
I think that was from ecology, right? Todd, not.
Ecology, yep. I'm sorry, did I say commerce ecology? Bad words tonight, aren't I? I gotta be careful with that, calling you the wrong.
Yeah.
Getting ecology and commerce all mixed up.
I'm sorry. I thought that we had discussed earlier that because we didn't get the ecology comments until tonight, that we were going to postpone both of them until.
Oh, okay.
The next, next touch so that we had an opportunity to review them.
So, but you have been through the edits that, um.
We have been through the, I, at least I have and I know Renee has, probably Tom has been through the edits that were made and I had no problems with them.
And that was categorical to both wetlands and habitat. I misunderstood.
It was.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. The, the ones in our packet, I had time to review. I don't know if, uh, the commission had.
So then I get, I guess I'd ask the same question of ELS. Did you all have any questions? If, um, planning commission's categorically okay with your changes to the wet, wetlands and habitat. Um, and then we're going to take some time and get, try to work out some responses to ecology on both. Did you have any questions on habitat that, that you needed to discuss with planning commission?
No, because we pretty much incorporated, you know, when we did go over it, even though it was briefly. Um, we addressed those comments and that was incorporated. And then I just had a few additional things that got added. Being, or maybe just one, um, but the majority of the text was what, uh, plan commission had already seen.
And then did you have any questions about ecology's guidance on, on their comments or any of that? Did you need any?
Um.
Direction.
You know, ecology really isn't the, um, isn't the regulator for this section. So, uh, the comments that they have were, um. They weren't, that, they didn't really understand, I think, what they were saying. There was one comment that I did think was good, but there was. Um, it was about, we have the table, we had, um, type S and type F. And that was a little confusing because it made it sound like we were actually putting. Those buffers on type S, which we won't because that, those are regulated by the SMP. Um, so I thought that was a good comment. I think they only had two comments.
Yeah, it was pretty minimal on that one.
Yeah, but I wouldn't expect that because where the comments are going to come from is actually fish and wildlife. And I don't think. Um, unless you want to get preliminary, um, that probably won't happen until you go through the CBA process.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that to begin with. I thought we were okay with only one, but you're okay with all, so perfect.
So once again, thank you very much for being with us tonight.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure that we'll speak again.
Yeah, next, next, sounds like next planning condition meeting.
All right.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Moving onward to the, uh, Toledo comprehensive plan update.
Oh, can I ask a quick question before, uh, or this definition is, are we going over this at all or?
Um, again, that, that was, um, ecology's input on some of our definitions. So I'm going to take your, uh, direction from these two and apply it here. I'll just, we'll integrate their changes and we'll bring that back to you as well.
This is literally my, my only comment on this was the idea of an accessory dwelling unit, uh, doesn't cover being in the same lot. It just talks about the attached or within. And so I wondered if that was needed in that definition. Cause I looked at the state definition and it, it has on the county definition, it has all that.
Yeah, um.
You see what I'm saying?
Interesting. I, I might have. See, I added definitions at the end that I had. I hadn't integrated my recommended, let's see, so. Additional definitions. And I didn't have ADU in there. But yes, you're right. ADU should be the three types of ADUs that are permitted, either, um, detached, attached or within. So. But yes, you're right, ADU should be the three types of ADUs that are permitted, either um detached, attached, or within, so. And that wasn't even something that ecology.
That's what stood out.
Perfect. Did anybody else look at the definitions and have any other input on those? Catch anything that I might have missed?
I looked at them and. It seemed okay to me. Nice catch.
Thank you. Have to make up for all those days I didn't read.
Mississippi. Okay, uh, you wanted to go over the comprehensive plan update? I'm not sure.
Yeah, this is the the update schedule, um, and this is just something that I bring back to you every meeting now. It shows the elements that we've completed, what we have left outstanding. Um, and kind of the goals for when we can try to get things through. Um, I still think that in next month's meeting, I'll be able to have a fairly complete package of the entire comp plan. With the comp plan maps, zoning maps, um. So a complete package, I think, complete package in August is still a reasonable target.
So are we still looking at a September public hearing?
That's, that's still the goal. I um, I think we'll be able to integrate these changes and we can discuss those. Uh, I don't really, I mean, since you've been through all the elements individually, unless there's other good catches as you're going through. That complete package, I don't expect a lot of discussion on that since we've been through it all and all I'm doing now is assembling it.
We did talk about the idea of having the pack, complete package a week before the meeting, and so if that's still possible, that would be great.
Yeah, that's three weeks from now. Um, it's, it's all written, it's all done, so I'm just, like I said, it's just about assembly and. I think that's, that's very.
Well, the other question I had was, based on the schedule, then the CIPA will be underway when we. Take a look at the final draft, is that right?
My um, my goal is to try and get the CIPA out soon after your August meeting. As well as um.
Cause we thirty days into it, we have the public hearing, it's a sixty day CIPA review.
It's a sixty day, so the sixty day review doesn't have to be completed. That's Commerce's review that we need before council can take action on it.
Okay.
Um, and I'm hopeful to get this to council in October, November, so. The sixty day review doesn't have to start at the same time as CIPA, but since I'll have all the documents compiled, I was just gonna start them both at the same time, so that'll be just following your August meeting. So that'll mean it's a fourteen day CIPA comment period plus the publication. Um, I'll try to queue up all that stuff, so we'll have it ready for publication so that it'd be ready to publish the week after your meeting. So we'll have CIPA comments back um before you do your planning commission hearing in September.
Okay.
And then um likely um just after your August meeting, I'll go out for the sixty day review with Commerce. Which will mean that council will be ready to act on it, probably late October, early November.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, last item of business before we uh open it to public comment. Is that Brian Dennis uh resigned for personal reasons? And thus we have no co-chair for the planning commission. I would entertain nominations for the co-chair at this time.
I would nominate.
Renee.
Any other nominations? I would second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're elected.
Yeah, we do that. That's great. I'll have to figure out how to do this.
It really is just covering Steve, but he's not here.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be like this.
Boy, am I planning to be absolute.
My C three are planned.
We are almost done with the comp plan and code changes, so.
Well, they're good, good, good.
Almost done.
Okay, at this time, I like to open up to public comment. Yes, ma'am. Are you going to approach the pedestal? Give us your name and your address.
Yeah.
Um, uh Todd, can you give us a guess as to how big of a document this will end up being? Under a hundred pages, more than a hundred pages?
Um, well, the the comp plan itself will be probably just a little bit. Couple, maybe twenty or thirty pages longer than your last one. Um, I'm adding sections. I'm not really deleting sections. Some sections I'm not changing at all. It'll be about the same length as your last document.
So as a follow-up question, is there any reason why council can't be reading this early? In order to just get it absorbed?
It's public information. They can read all the drafts and anytime they want to. Um, but if if we want to have a a formal workshop with council, we can schedule that where we can present them as a council with a full draft, but. I mean, certainly, and and hopefully council's aware that planning commission's working on this and and they're putting in the attention that they want to. Well, Councilmember Hayes has been here a lot of these, so I know at least one member of council's been pretty, pretty dialed into this. The rest of council is is at their discretion, right?
Five or six days to absorb this, you know, when it's suddenly on their agenda, might be a nice courtesy.
So I I think that to, what I would say, and I'm just interjecting here, so my, what I'm thinking about is that it would be nice to have a. Public facing page that would contain the latest drafts of all parts, and it could just be in in the order that would be assembled essentially. That way it wouldn't require any additional work, but just rather a publication of what's current now. Based on all other revisions and just to make sure, we do the due diligence to make sure that's updated with the latest things, and we can begin reading now, uh essentially.
Well.
And I guess I should say draft or complete, sorry.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Um, but I I would think I would actually wait till Todd brings August's document, which is gonna be a fairly cohesive document of my itself.
Got it.
We'll put it in as informational and we'll just give. Counsel like, hey, you guys are gonna be expected to read this whole thing. You're gonna have five days, so start reading now, yeah.
So so that's, that's what I've done in other jurisdictions. We don't ever like to surprise councils. So usually, once, once we're getting close with planning commission, we'll take a draft to council and workshop it. Um, I just did that last week in Chehalis, and council actually had some very good direction on. On what they wanted to see in their comp plan, so it was good that we did that, and we're able to implement that um before the final. Before the final council meeting, so if we did that with the August draft and we did a workshop with council in August. Um, I could still bring back those changes to planning commission when they did their September hearing. So I, we we can give it all to them then and say, this is what we've got. We'd like any input or direction. They can't take action on it because it's, it's out of order and before they're allowed to actually make a decision on it, but they can certainly give staff direction anytime. So and and give planning permission direction if they feel like we're heading in the wrong direction.
So what's the date we said that would be something to look at that's more cohesive?
August.
August.
At, at your next month's um planning commission.
But you could put August online and 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 just.
Yes.
We can start reviewing right away, so.
Whether you decide to hold a workshop or not, you could at least tell council that it's there available for.
Yeah, we're just gonna get him the rough draft, so that way, I mean, you guys have gone through all of it over, you know, a year almost now, so we're all, we're not saying we need a workshop or anything like that. We're just gonna get it to him a little bit ahead of time. If there's anything crazy that that jumps out at them, I can bring it to you guys. Um, and then that way they're prepared when it comes, because if not, it'll be a really, really long meeting.
We can also, on the next council meeting, just let the rest of council know that it's in the planning commission's. No meeting minutes to see what you all are working on.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna start taking all the meeting minutes and putting them um in council anyways, because Jamie had requested it, so. And honestly, we probably should have been taking all the final drafts at the time when they were like, all right, they're good, and just sending them over as informational. As this went along, because then I could have brought back any comments, but.
Yes, sir.
On that same similar topic, I was wondering, do we have fifteen, twenty minutes in the mid-month workshop to talk about? Uh, fire EMS. Uh, just kind of just to kind of get a read from the rest of council.
Ye- yeah, I think it's gonna obviously be a much bigger conversation, so we could schedule. But I can put it on, yeah, I just got the two things on. And Chris. Next Monday.
Next Monday. I was gonna be here anyway, but you want me here early now?
Yeah.
Or the new co-chair, you can always appoint them.
We have the historical society, Connor, and I'm not sure why park board organization is in the workshop.
Oh, that we should have gone to the reading, to the next, to the the actual meeting, yeah. Connor will be quick, um.
So, so it's the historical society.
Yeah, Connor should be quick. I just have to show what I need to show and.
Ron, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Chief? Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn. Turn.
Second?
Yeah.
All in favor? You heard her.